All rise and pledge the flag, we'll open the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, good evening, everybody. March 12th, and it looks like we're waiting for another snowstorm, but word is, it's not going to be as bad as the past two. And I think, what, one day we ended up closing early and another day not operating the admin staff, but it's been a pretty wild march. I came back from a trip to Southern California, it was 70 degrees for a couple days after that. I thought we made it through, you know, I'm thinking more the budget and different things like that, but then we got two blasters and one of them, we actually did the four-corner cleanup. It was just on the cusp where we tried to keep that place active and vibrant and we pulled it off Friday night and looked great out there. While we're waiting, we do have a public hearing set for 7 o'clock. Jen did indicate she's not going to make it tonight, so, but we're talking about weather and snow. We did get a nice letter from the Red Hook Schools superintendent thanking our highway department for the work they did with the recent storms. We also did a lot of work with the county and the town and communications, and fortunately, we dodged here in the village most of the power outages, but we had a few, we stayed on top of them, but we're in the flatlands here where we don't have the same hillside and trees problem that they have up in the town. And we did have to push Central Hudson once or twice, but we do have a great working relationship with the local contact, and they did respond quite well, to be honest with you, but kudos to the highway guys. First on our agenda, we had a public hearing, but maybe before we do that, why don't we just do the minute approval, I'd like to get them on the record as approved. Last month, we had meetings February 12th, 15th, and 22nd. The last two were pretty much the budget sessions we do. I've reviewed the clerk submissions and we circulated them digitally to you folks. Were there any additions, alterations, or corrections? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Okay. Like we said, on the agenda, we have the annual tax cap override steps we take. Those in the audience are our regular attendees, they know this, but we'll just go into it briefly. In New York State, each year the municipalities are held to a tax cap which tends to equate, we're not tends, but equates to the consumer price index numbers for that year. It's known to the public as a 2% tax cap. Oddly or uniquely, since we've been a board and me as a mayor, we've never had a full 2% until this year. Prior year, I think it was 1.15, one year was .68, or yeah, .68. I think I remember one even like in .12, like something really, really low where you're not talking any big increments of dollar increases at all, but this board has been able to stay within the cap, which has been great. And that's our intention this year, but each year we give ourselves a little protection just in case, and we're not stating or indicating we're going to exceed the 2% cap, and to be honest, right now, most of our budget work has us staying within it, but we just, our timeline is by March 20th, I have to submit a tentative budget to the clerk treasurer, and then we have the ability to modify that afterward, but that, further modifications are by motion and resolution, in other words, it's more formal. At this point, we just pretty much talk on a workshop level to look at past budget history and set new budget numbers. That's the background for the local law, what we would do is vote on it later, but like I said, our intent is to stay within 2%, but we would open up to the public for the public portion of the public hearing. So I would hereby ask that we open a hearing. Looks like it's 7:05, so we'll take comment. Thank you. Well, I don't really see a need to cut. I think we're functioning and providing the services we have. We do, we look at and we joke amongst the board, when this building was renovated and then supplemental bond was issued, that's what, about $255,000 between principal and interest per year, but in the year 2021, that goes away, which is not that far away anymore. It's like three years from now, so, but that's a quarter million down the road. Doesn't help us here today. And last year, we actually, we are seeing a little bump in the assessed value base, which means the market and economy is putting a little more value into the houses. So last year, even though we did increase the dollar of the levy, it actually went down a little bit as the rate per thousand collected, which was a help to our particular residents. And we do look at shared service wherever we can, we think we've maxed that out. I'm looking over toward Charlie, we are working toward the LED program, the LED streetlight program. That's still kicking around, but that would take us three to four years to pay it off, and we would plan to do that with the current budget numbers, which is about $55,000 a year that we pay for streetlights. But after about the third to fourth year, depending on the cost of the fixtures and so forth, we would save about $40,000, we project on that, so, now three to four years, like $300,000 savings sitting out there, but that's what we're looking at.
Can you do a name for them, the lighting?
Well, we thought about that. I would say it's a good idea, but probably no, because what we would do is, we're talking with the New York Power Authority to get the funding, and we already budget, the big cost on the lights is the rental of the arm and the head itself, so once we own them, we just have to pay for the energy and then have some maintenance costs, but they're not as high as what Central Hudson charges per fixture. But we did consider that, and I think it still looks like we can save clearly so much by doing it all at once that it's worth it to go that way. What we'd have to do is, we're working with actually 17 other munis, there's an RFP out there, and it's not finalized yet, but it would be maintained by a private sector, high-voltage qualified contractor, you know, with buckets and certification Central Hudson would want.
Are there any other villages or townships that want to put in on this?
Yeah, like I said, 17 others, actually, 17 others, Town of Red Hook included, Tivoli, then Loudham across the river, Rosendale, that area.
Rhinebeck Village and Town as well are involved.
Yeah, so...
Then will we get the one person to maintain it, put it out for bid?
Yeah.
Yeah, presumably, the, you know, the contractor that gets the job to do the maintenance work would be servicing a number of local, close by municipalities.
Right, you wouldn't have to jump on one light, you'd maybe have two or three if they were out, right?
Right. I mean, you batch the maintenance and the service, you know, because you're paying per fixture.
Hearing no other questions from the audience, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
No moves.
All in favor? Aye. Good, thank you. We'll work on the next piece later tonight. Moving into the regular meeting, we have, we've done the minute approval. We would ask Clerk Treasurer Shirella to give her treasurer's report, please.
Account balances, general fund, $395,831.48. Water, $114,988.38. Trust and agency, $31,709.75. Materials management, $4,894.75. Petty cash, $2552. If you notice, the balances are minus payroll.
Is the materials management $5,000 or $4,000?
$4,000.
What she was starting to say, Brent, see the bold on the report, that's the new line. What happened today in ADP payroll processing, as of, what, 4 o'clock, it hadn't gone through yet? So technically, the balances are 421, but once payroll goes through on general, it's going to be 395, and that's happening wherever she bolded the other ones. So it's reflecting about nearly, the biweekly payroll coming out of each of those lines. So we wanted to have it illustrated for you all.
And village green, $4,0136.88. Hard scrabble, $4,0123.84. Health insurance, $4,035.83. Expenses, general, $112,188.07. Water, $94,758. Trust and agency, $1,709.75. And materials management, $3,542.7. That's it.
I had one question. I went through the vouchers, I know I looked at water, but that water total, $94,758, was there one big item in there?
Um, I'll have to look it.
Let's see.
Yeah, I think it was transfer.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. All the urine stuff.
Yeah. All right, that answers that one for me.
I think, I think everything, everything big is paid. Oh, and we got our grant, court grant funds in, $7,000.
Oh, good. That's nice. We could talk about that in a minute in the other part of the meeting, but with the treasurer's report, it makes sense to me, as long as you all understand those bolded sections, I would ask that there be a motion to accept the treasurer's report as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, it looks like I go next. As far as police report for the month of February, we had 273 incidents, breakout is 212, 212 in the village of Red Hook, 58 in the town, and three in Tivoli. Tickets resulting from those incidents are 86. It's 51 in the village of Red Hook, no parking tickets, and 35 were in the town. Arrest total 26 for the month, breaks out 17 in the village and nine in the town. Trustee Norris is not here, maybe I'll switch to what she presented in her report. Just have to find it here in a minute. On materials management, it looks like for the month of February, she's showing pretty good tag sales, $4,125 even, and it looks like I was doing some trending work that equates to about $3,500 a month in sales, and like you know, we're in budget sequence now, when you trend that out, it's like $43,200. We did want to talk about something we do each year, I think it's worth it again, it's to do that spring cleanup we do, if you buy 10 tags, you get a 10% discount. I think it's good for our residents and it's helps promote our program too. That's only available, though, at sales at Village Hall, our outside merchants, the Red Hook Natural Foods and Maxx don't have the ability to participate in that, so it'd just be for sales here. So before I wrap up, I'll ask for a motion on that. As far as expenses, it looks like it's the standard part. Jen lists the recycling cost and then the household garbage cost, and there's a fuel surcharge that Ulster Resource Recovery still applies. It says the total cost for the month in those categories were $991, but again, we also charge the highway department's labor to that day, and so we're not making $3,000 profit on the $4,000 in tag sales. And you'll see, you know, like we say always, it's their one day of work, it's charged to that enterprise budget line. Maybe before I move off that, I would entertain a motion that Village of Red Hook, repeat, it's 10% off for 10 or more tag sales. Is there a second?
That's April 9.
Yes, that would be. We would put in our merchants letter. I heard a second in discussion, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. On the more interesting side of the world, in your old packets, we put the egg scramble, and we usually hold this up for the panda lady, I don't know if she can shoot that. We have a new camera operator today, but she's a film person at Marist, I got what she has to do under control. It'll be held March 24th, 11 a.m. at the Linden Avenue Middle School, and like each year, we have crafts, face painting, and the famous, as Jen calls it, egg dash. We call it the egg scramble on the front of the poster, but new this year, this is the library and working with the county, it'll be at a adaptive area for children under 13 with special needs. On our poster and our promotional materials, there's a number to call the library here in Red Hook to register, that one particular part needs a pre-registration, the rest is show as you may, and we also point out that it's a conjunctive, a joint effort of Red Hook PD, Red Hook Village, and the Red Hook Library that put this together, and the PD does a lot of the heavy lifting, but I mean, I think they have five or 6,000 plastic eggs that Lara and different folks are working at at home, stuffing in various candies, and then the police do go around and get gift certificates from places like Ben's Pizza, Stewart's, and a couple other places. So it's a great event, and it's at the middle school, like we said, happens really fast, so be there a little bit, quite a bit before 11:00, actually, if you're planning on coming. It'll be good. Rotary is working on Apple Blossom Day, this year it'll be held Saturday, May 12. David Wright or Red Hook Rotary are the point contacts to get more information. The village assists, but we don't actually run that event. Jen is saying she will not be holding our bike rodeo this May. This was one of our spring events that tied in with the Town of Red Hook's tour to Red Hook. I'm not sure I agree. I'd like to see if the town's still doing a tour to Red Hook, if we could do something, but we have time to work on that. Materials management, we talked about, and that would be it from celebrations and materials management.
Chocolate Festival still going to happen?
Pardon me?
Chocolate Festival.
Yeah.
It's already got the date.
Yeah, I see, talk about it. And I think the chamber's doing something the next couple days, St. Patrick's Day, do you know where that is? I got some invitation, it's either at, I don't know if it's Yum Yum, somewhere in the village at one of our businesses. I think it's J&amp;J, J&amp;J for the chamber, but you go to the chamber website to look that up. So we did police, we did materials management. Mr. Trustee Trapp, are you ready to work on your world?
Oh, you betcha.
Thanks.
Let's see here. The Duchess County Planning Federation has pretty much set the first two of our three classes. We had the times together, we're waiting on another gentleman to give us some scheduling, and Mr. David Everett, he's going to present a class, it should be pretty good. The first class we're going to present, I, the three subjects escaped me, but it's a three for two. We're going to do the three classes, and it's going to cost two pays, so 10 bucks for the three classes, and we do the Fiji thing and give you coffee and cookies and send you home with a bunch of credits and hopefully some knowledge, so, and all of these are going to be out in Millbrook, as is always the case. When we get a little closer to everything, we will have the notifications sent out to all the member municipalities, and it's the first time in a long time we actually have every municipality in Duchess County as a member and paid up already, which is, which rarely happens. We're always got three or four people lagging behind, so we're not flush with cash, but we've got a couple of dollars to breathe with, so it's coming along pretty good. We're looking at the potential of a more regional, maybe semi-national speaker to shake it up a little bit. We had talked about the DC guy from DPZ at one point, he was like way out of our budget, you know? It, we're looking at, you know, a couple of grand to bring somebody in, so we're going to see if we can find somebody that would be interesting and appropriate for us, so that is kind of the world on that. We'll get those out to you guys when we get a little closer. And this past month, we had six building permits issued, we had five certificates of occupancy issued, no certificates of compliance, one municipal search, no orders to remedy, no stopper quarters, no court appearances, and there are a couple of fire inspections that Clark did, a couple of inspections here in general. The planning board, I think, had a couple of items of business in February, and ZBA had no agenda at this point, so no meeting. And the building department, for a small village in the middle of February, took in $1,087, which is actually pretty respectable for this time of year to get us in there. And Brent and I and Ray Toll have been working on our response to the, to the moratorium that the village passed, and I think we're, we have our first pass at it, I think, ready for public view at this point, so, or, you know, it's going to get distributed and shipped off to all the people that need to approve everything that we do, so, and Brent will get into a little bit more of that later on. So, let's see, I think that's it.
Thank you, Jay. We have a little bit in the regular agenda section to talk about some staffing, a few changes there, but we can go into that in detail there, Jay. Before we go to Mr. Lang, I was, within our group too, we do interact with Red Hook seniors, and I went to an opening at the new community center here about 10 days ago over on Fisk Street. The opening was linking up a county office for the aging program, which they call the Senior Friendship Center. It's open Monday through Thursday from 10 to 2. Essentially, it's a gathering point for seniors to socialize, have lunch, and so forth. I could hold this up too for the camera, but there's contact points that are really at the county level. One is duchessnewyork.gov/aging, and there's a phone number. I'll give Cindy a copy of this for their records, but it's our area code and then When I went over, that center has an old kitchen area set up like a school kitchen, so they can warm and do certain things, and they do a version of Meals on Wheels there, and they're working with us and the town. It's consolidated there now, but seniors come not just from Red Hook, it's Rhinebeck, Mile End, it's a focal point, it's pretty neat, and when I was there, it was probably 20 folks, and it looks like it's catching on with more and more folks. It's sort of a place, it's not, doesn't have any medical care facilities, it's just socialize and interact amongst the senior group. So we'll probably give that to you, so you have it for your records, and then we'll put one up on our bulletin board here. And Mr. Trustee Lang, are you ready to work?
Yes, absolutely. So we have a new format Village of Red Hook Water Treatment Facilities monthly report from our new managers at VRI. So during the month of February, the water treatment facility treated 5,747,000 gallons, which is an average of 205,300 gallons per day. And in comparison, last year, there were 6,389,000 gallons treated, and the year before, 7,605,000 gallons. So we've seen from '16 to '17, there was a drop in about 15%, and we saw another decrease in usage of about 10% from last year to this year, so it's all heading in the right direction. We also, there were three samples tested for bacteria, and they all came back negative. And the water treatment plant used 50 gallons of sodium hypochlorite over the course of the month, and so the average daily use on that was 1.79 gallons per day. That hypochlorite usage has remained fairly stable over the months. There are, there is additional information in here, I don't know if you want to talk about any of the specifics, standing issues?
Yeah, I could generalize it, because I've been working with a little more, instead of reading every word here. What they're working, they were finding a stray voltage situation, and diagnosis was, they have pulled well 12, and our engineers are working with appropriate sizing for a new pump there, so that's underway, and we do have, in our water budget, we have what's called a short-term asset fund, where well pumps and things that wear out would come out of that budget line, so that's all budgeted for. They're still working on the end game of phase two, Charlie, where we still have to decommission the old elevated tank, and they're working on that thing we hear about each week, the software packaging and, and different solutions. It looks like what they're trying to do is get that done relatively quickly, and the engineers are still working on that. Then, one thing the inside staff is really happy with, there were a few open work orders, what that means is a couple of meters that are giving weird readings, and so the new VRI company is managing to respond to that more, it's not being allowed to fall between the cracks, so to speak. So we list some names there, which I don't think those are important, it's just that they're being worked on, and then, but it is a much more detailed report, it gives us a little more to work with, which is good. It's, the prior operator did a lot of this, but didn't communicate some of those things, and I like this graph, it's going to be curious to see, I put it up on the wall for the people in the audience, but it's looking like it's a month, and it looks like in May we surge and we trickle down, bad word, right, water, and then it gradually climbs up in December and then coming down, but it'd be kind of cool to see that over a long period of time. Kind of makes sense, in the summer, more water usage, but it looks like it then almost re-peaks in December for some reason.
Right.
But what's the difference here? Two, yeah, it's, the gradient's not that big, 210, 205, so it's 5,000 differences, yeah. Okay, Charles, thank you very much. Looks like we are ready for Mr. Trustee, Mr. Deputy Mayor Trapp, excuse me, Kavalec, are you ready to go?
Sorry, with the Village Green Committee method report, the current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts as of February 28th are as follows. Community bidification, we have $2,846 as a balance, shade tree contractual, we are showing a balance of negative $6,350, and the Village Green checking account, balance of $4,136.88. The Village Green Committee met on February 23rd, and we are starting to talk about the 2018 annual spring planting, which will happen sometime in April. We have to coordinate with the nursery and also select sites and trees and that kind of thing, so we're starting to work hopefully a little bit earlier so we can get a handle on that, and I know we had an inquiry from Bard College to perhaps help us out with some of the planting, and once we know more specific information, we'll reach out to Bard, and we can always use their help. As I said, we did review possible planting sites for the spring planting, we're looking at properties on South Broadway, Old Post Road, Park Avenue, Fraley Street, and Memorial Park, and we also discussed the attendance by a Village Green Committee officer to go to the Tree City, Tree Line, and Tree Campus USA annual recognition ceremony that'll be held on March 21st at the Albany Marriott Hotel. That's a good program, and get a chance to meet everybody else involved with the trees, including utility companies and college campuses. And we also discussed the possible removal of a tree on Old Post Road. The Village of Red Hook's Highway Department, this will be the last month, I think, I'll be reading this, but the village's snow ordinance is in effect until March 31st. No parking is permitted on village streets from 11 o'clock PM to 6 o'clock AM, and on New York State highways, which is Route 199 and Route 9, from 2 a.m. to 6 a.m. during the same period. When snow and ice removal operations are underway, any vehicle parked or abandoned on any street may be removed by or under the direction of the Red Hook Village Police Department or any responding law enforcement agencies, and costs associated with the vehicle towing and storage will be charged to the vehicle's owners. And I did notice a few cars going down on the flatbed last week during the storm. Also, the owner and occupant of every building or lot in the village with an adjoining side room... sidewalk shall remove snow and ice within 24 hours of a snowstorm. At the direction of the Village Board of Trustees, the Village Highway Department will remove snow and ice left unclear at a cost of $2 per linear foot, and this cost will be assessed and collected with the next tax levy. Some interesting information, the Duchess County Transportation Council conducted a traffic count on Amherst Drive and Firehouse Lane on September 25th. They found that on Amherst Road, Amherst Drive, I guess, the combined traffic flow for both directions is 724 vehicles per day. The peak eastbound movement is at 7 AM to 8 AM, at 50 vehicles, while peak westbound is, is during the period of 5 o'clock and 6 o'clock PM at 48. Heavy vehicle share was low, and the 85th percentile speed is below the posted speed limit. Firehouse Lane, the combined travel for both directions is 1,764 vehicles per day. Eastbound was 1,043 vehicles per day, and the westbound was 721. This may relate to drivers using Firehouse Lane as a cut-through to get to 199 East. This was evident in the late afternoon between 3 and 4, with 106 vehicles, and 5 and 6 o'clock PM with 105 vehicles. The heavy truck share was low, but speeds were higher, with the 85th percentile five to six miles above the posted speed limit. Actually, one eastbound driver was apparently going between 50 and 55 miles per hour around 5 to 6 PM. So, it's, I don't think that's even a quarter mile there, but. A study was conducted as part of a, a study with the New York State DOT, Region Eight, to review options for traffic control devices and/or options at the Route 9, Amherst-Firehouse-Lane intersection. So, we, hopefully, we'll be in contact with DOT soon about some recommendations and ideas that we have been tossing around for a while. Scrap metal was sold on January 23rd for $470.80. Total revenue generated in this fiscal year, 2017-18, is $2,981.40. Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, $25,192.97 has been generated. Proceeds from this program go toward the purchasing of tools and equipment for the highway, water, and material management departments. Anyone interested in donating scrap metal can contact the Highway Department at 758-8600 or the Village Clerk's Office, and Highway Department personnel will assist property owners by picking up scrap metal upon request. The Reddick Infrastructure and Intermunicipal Task Force monthly report, the Reddick Sewer Project. The Village Board of Trustees conducted a public hearing on February 12th, 2018, in the Reddick Village Building to listen to property owners within the Phase One sewer service area on the map and plan of the proposed area of local assessment for Phase One of the municipal sewer project, which includes an apportionment of costs upon lands benefited. Eight property owners commented on the proposed map, plan, and assessments. Meetings were held on February 2nd, 16th, and 23rd in the Reddick Village Building. It's our, our weekly Friday meetings. We discussed the, there's actually five remaining property owners have not responded to the questionnaires, requesting information regarding location of existing sewers, septic cesspool locations, and electrical connection capacity and location. Our engineer from CT Mail, Ed Vopelak, continues to be available to answer questions regarding this questionnaire. So, five out of 127 properties isn't really too bad. CT Mail's associate engineers, Ryan Biggs, Clark and Davis, have completed all 137 draft easements. Village Land Use Attorney Victoria Pallador will review and approve the draft easements prior to the release for property owners' review and signatures, and this is anticipated to go out this week. So, it's still a little bit of work to do on the easements. We also reviewed possible grant applications for a future Phase Two sewer project, including the 2008 New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Intended Use Plan, which is due in May of 2018, the 2018 Clean Water Infrastructure Improvement Act Grant Program, and that'll be due after May of 2018, and also the 2018 Duchess County Partnership for Manageable Growth Grant Program, which is due in October of 2018. So, we're starting to look at these already, actually starting to consider this as well. Ed Vopelak, again from CT Mail, will coordinate with the grant writer on those grant applications. And we reviewed the progress set of design drawings for the Reddick Sewer Project Phase One. So, there's quite a bit of drawings, and I think the design work is pretty much done, and then will be submitted to all the regulatory agencies. There are six that will be commenting on this, both county, state, and federal agencies. And we did meet with a property owner on February 23rd to review assessment, her assessment, project, and locations of sewer components. The Reddick Village Water Project Phase Two, we're trying to wrap this up by April, I think, we're trying to close. Meetings were held on February 2nd and 23rd at the Village Building, and we did meet with VRI, who's our water operator and contractor, on decommissioning the Tower Street elevated storage tank, as was alluded to in Charlie's monthly report. And the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation unofficially approved the final loan amount and the Minority Women Business Enterprise Utilization Plan. The final cost of the water project for Phase Two ended up at $3,734,237.91. Two principal payments had been made, one of 6,580, the other of 72,000, and, and the $2.28 million Drinking Water Infrastructure Improvement Act Grant will be deducted from the total loan amount. The loan amount right now stands at $1,375,737.91. A closing date with USDA is being discussed again, hopefully in April. The Water Project Phase Three, again, this is something that we're just talking about at this point, but we met on February 2nd to look at the possible scope of work and preliminary estimates for the areas, including Elizabeth Street, Fifth Street, Thompson Street, Cherry Street, and Grave Street. And also looking at funding opportunities from the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation to the Intended Use Plan, the Drinking Water Infrastructure Improvement Act Grant Program, and the Duchess County Partnership for Manageable Growth Grant Program. And it's still pending further discussion, review, and approval by the Village Board of Trustees before we actually move forward with this. Well, 12 upgrade, I believe that Ed touched on that through Charlie's report, so I won't go too much into detail. The Reddick Village Zoning Review Committee, Jay briefly talked about it. The Village Board of Trustees adopted a six-month moratorium to prevent demolition of buildings over 120 square feet in size and any expansion of automobile, automotive service stations in the general business district. The zoning review committee was established to analyze current regulations and make recommendations to the Village Board. The scope of the ZRC's review work is limited to reviewing regulations in the general business district regarding motor vehicle service stations and associated retail facilities, as well as demolition of structures and suggesting amendments consisting with the pattern book and comprehensive plan. The zoning review committee met on February 18th and 25th in the Reddick Village Building. We also met last week in March, Jay Trap, Ray Toll, and myself attended, and we reviewed the following section of the zoning code, Section 200-5, which are the definitions, Section 200-10, which is the general business district, Section D6, special permitted uses, Section 200-33, which were off-street parking and automobile storage, Section 200-36, which is public garages and motor vehicle service stations, Sections A, B, C, D, E, and F, and article, and also Section 243, termination of non-conforming uses and discontinuance, Section 200-44, change of non-conforming use, and Section 200-45, which is maintenance of a non-conforming use. And we'll probably be sending a letter to the mayor and the Board of Trustees this week with our recommendations. It's a lot of work. On the intermunicipal task force, both Charlie and I sent on the task force, I think, Charlie, you're, you're now representing the Village of Reddick? I don't know if that's, I don't know if the town made it official yet or not, but I'll make it official from an unofficial point of view. The task force met on February 2nd, 10th, 16th, and 23rd at the Reddick Town Hall, and we are currently discussing the Red Church Cemetery, which will be owned and operated by the Town of Reddick, starting in March this month. Draft regulations regarding formula businesses, upper Reddick Hamlet Business District, and food truck regulations for the Town of Reddick are clearly being reviewed by the town's planners and attorneys, and I believe the town board will be looking at that this month as well. We reviewed the possibilities of the Town of Reddick assisting the Village of Reddick with zoning amendments and infrastructure expansion projects, and we reviewed and discussed short-term rental regulations, including the possibility of recommending health, building, and fire inspections to non-owner occupied residents used for short-term rentals. This is where we're looking at, what they're looking at right now in Woodstock and also the Village of Rhinebeck. And the community solar project, the project for the proposed community solar project on the Reddick Village well fields is currently in a holding pattern, pending review and implications of the new federal tax law, tariffs, and possible alternative funding resources. That's been interesting, as usual, at the task force. The Reddick Economic Development Committee, Ed Blundell, represents the village as a liaison. EDC meetings were held on February 14th and 28th in the Reddick Village Building. They, Ed gave an update on the Reddick Village Sewer Project, updates on draft plans and ideas for the marketing subcommittee for continued support of existing businesses through cooperative marketing campaigns and enhanced social media. I believe there are several commercials out online with the businesses on the four corners, the three of the four businesses, very nicely produced and done. They're reviewing plans and discussing about plans to continue work toward a speedier town, planning board review process, and to monitor and influence adoption of any proposed town ordinance regarding franchise businesses. And they also discussed advertising the 2018 Rotary Club Apple Blossom Day Business Directory. The Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board, which I'm a member of, held no meetings during the month of February. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of February 28th is $993,704.31. There were no Reddick Town Zoning Review Committee meetings, I'm also a member of that one, and the Salt Hill Watershed Community Meetings, which I attend. The meeting was held on February 21st at the Elmer Dorf Inn. Robin Smith, who's a Bard College Assistant Professor in Environmental Sciences, presenting emerging threats to the Salt Hill water quality. There are updates on projects, including the eagles and salamander migrations, the Reddick Verbal Pools Project, and the Bard College Town of Reddick Microhydro Project. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Brent. I made a few notes as he was going through. One, if we could somehow index Panda, but we're not quite there yet, but when Brent was talking about the sewer project and the next packet of documents going out to the 127 property owners in the service area, like Brent said, that'll be this week, it's quite a thick packet. And what CT Mail in the cover letter from us has confirmed that they will be here on Saturdays to, it'll be in the letter, but people can come in and the engineer will be here from 10 to 2, and then some of the documents require a notary. Cindy, our clerk, is a notary, and she indicates she'll also come in those two Saturdays. But it doesn't apply to everybody in the village, it's just those that are getting the letter, and it's clearly stated in the letter, but I think that'll be helpful, too, for folks. And as a reminder, each Friday, the engineer is here in general for all kinds of questions, not particular to the easement packet, but if anybody is in a district in the service area, rather, they would, they're more than welcome to come in on that. So, then, one thing as Brent was going through on the EDC, I was noticing that Bard College presented something to the Town of Reddick Planning Board as far as a new master plan for their next 10 to 15 years of growth. I sent them a letter, although Bard's not in the Village of Reddick, I thought maybe we could get an abbreviated version, something, because they are an economic driver and a cultural driver for us here in the village, so we'll see if they take us up on it. I don't think we need the same depth of detail that the Town Planning Board would want, but I'd like to hear what they're talking about and see what's on the horizon with them. So, it looks like we've moved through the department and committee reports. We can then go to the regular business. Item one is local law, tax cap override. In your packets should be the hard copy version of it. This was the subject of the public hearing about an hour ago. It's pretty much routine, folks. The intent is to allow us to adopt a budget for the fiscal year commencing June 1, 18, that could be in excess of the tax levy limit. And like I said, in the introductory part of the public hearing, we do not intend to exercise that right, but it's better to have it in case something sneaks up on us in the next six weeks here that we did not think about. That's fairly unlikely, but it's still good to have this. And what we do is, we, if we so vote, we approve it, the clerk files it with the state, and then in the course of adopting the budget in probably our May meeting, we would rescind the ability to override if, if we don't need it. So, that's been our historic process, and it seems to work. I like having it as an option, just in case. So, anyway, looking at it, Cindy would give us a local law number for tonight, I guess? One, okay. And, um... Mr. Trustee Trap, would you like to read Section 3? That's the Jermaine part, I think, for the board.
Sure. And this is the local law authorizing property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general municipal law, Section 3C. This is Section 3, Tax Levy Limit Override. The Board of Trustees of the Village of Reddick, County of Duchess, is hereby authorized to adopt a budget for the fiscal year commencing June 1, 2018, that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the amount otherwise prescribed in the general municipal law, Section 3C. Is that all you want?
Yeah, thanks. Section 4 is the standard severability, it's more legal talk, but Section 3, and as I've stated, that's the intent and the content of what we're trying to do. I would offer a motion that we adopt local law, number one, as in front of you and circulated earlier. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Let's see, this one's a little more involved, resolution sewer assessment basis. Again, this was the public hearing last month, where we had about 40 folks here that we directly invited who were in the service area, and we had that spreadsheet on the wall that showed how water consumption history was used as a base point to develop a consumption pattern at their property, and then the financial slash capital costs and operating mating costs as projected were calculated into that, and we came up with that, that number, that dollar number per benefit user or equivalent dwelling unit, which was listed as $780 for a single benefit unit. We did take the comment, and, you know, one thing I picked up was there are a few folks who feel it might be a financial stressor for them, and we do have, since the assessment basis was developed, we did get that supplemental $925,000, which will actually be reducing capital costs a bit, so the formula used will then be reflected, will... a bit, so the formula used will then be reflect, will take that nine twenty-five off. And we could, as a board, decide later, but we did run through the treasurer, seniors that currently qualify and take the water discount, the senior discount on water. It wasn't that significant, and quite, in fact, some of the direct people that seemed to have the fiscal stress were not currently taking the water discount for some reason. I don't know, that could mean they have an income above a cutoff point, or, you know, it's not that, they don't know about it, it could be they don't qualify for it. With that being said, the base intention of the public hearing on this is to show how we develop the assessment itself, and it's really capital costs, operating maintenance projections, and number of units served. It's really just a mathematical function that takes it to the dollar amount. So what counsel did for us was drafted this two-page document, and then you'll see as an exhibitor, an attachment, a copy, a black and white printed copy of the spreadsheet that we're projecting on the wall, and that, I believe, sits in the map plan report. And so it's a consistent document through those different locations. So I think we would probably want to read this out loud. Mr. Trapp, you're our designated reader, would you like to...
Want to go through all of the wherethes, all the way down to the end, then?
Yeah, I think so. If you stop, if you start, rather, at the bolded resolution to adopt, and then...
Sure. And what is this number? Resolution five? Five, okay, cool. Resolution number five, two thousand eighteen, whereas the village of Red Hook has established a municipal sewer system to serve the village pursuant to Article fourteen of New York State Village Law. And whereas the village is seeking to construct the sewer system in phases, with the first phase encompassing the general business district and contiguous areas, parenthetic the sewer project, close. And whereas the expense of constructing the sewer project will be assessed entirely upon lands benefited. And whereas a map and plan of the permanent sewer project with plans and specifications for sewage treatment has been prepared by C T Mail Associates dated February fifteen, two thousand seventeen, last revised May eight, two thousand seventeen, entitled Map Plan and Report, Village of Red Hook Sewer System, in parentheses, the map and plan, and was filed in the office of the village clerk on August twenty-five, two thousand seventeen. And whereas the map and plan identified the benefited parcels and included an apportionment of local assessment for each benefited parcel, a copy of which apportionment is attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. And whereas the maximum amount to be expended for the sewer project is four million nine hundred thousand dollars. And whereas the four million nine hundred thousand dollars capital cost is expected to be financed with a one million two hundred thousand dollar grant and a three million seven hundred thousand dollar, one point eight seven five percent loan from USDA, R D, Rural Development. Whereas on or before February second, two thousand eighteen, the village board of trustees caused a notice of public hearing regarding such apportionment to be published in the official newspaper of the village, to be posted on the village signboard, and to be served on the owners of the property in the local assessment area. And whereas on February twelve, two thousand eighteen, the village board of trustees held a public hearing to hear all interested persons on such apportionment and accepted written comments until February sixteen, two thousand eighteen. And whereas the village board has considered the testimony received at the hearing and any such written comments received regarding modification or correction of the apportionment or exclusion of land from the area of local assessment. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Red Hook. Number one, the Board of Trustees has determined that the proposed improvements are in the public interest and that the proposed apportionment is fair and reasonable. Number two, the proposed apportionment has been apportioned upon the lands within the local assessment area in the proportion as nearly as may be to the benefit which each lot or parcel will derive therefrom. Number four, the attached apportionment is hereby adopted as a final and conclusive apportionment for the sewer project. Number four, the village clerk is hereby directed to file this resolution and attached apportionment in the office of the village clerk. There you have it, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. So, let's see. Mr. Trapp has read the resolution. We titled it number five, side of offer, so we could have some discussion that we move to adopt the resolution in a five, as read and presented in front of you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like I said, I think I got ahead of myself there. I was looking for a discussion, any, any discussion on this? I think we heard everything. Like I said, I apologize, I got two steps ahead of you, but we've read it. I don't have any further input. These specifics are there, and I would just ask for another vote, so we're clear that I was asking for a vote now. All in favor of resolution number five?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Does she want one? Okay. Looks like clerk has indicated our attorneys want a roll call, so Ed Blundell votes yes. Mr. Kovalcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Jay Trapp?
Yes.
Thank you. This one's a little easier, another public hearing. This would be for April meeting, which would be the normal second Monday. What we have to do is have a public hearing for our upcoming budget. So I was thinking, as always, we would pick seven P M. And do you have the date there? Is everybody around?
April ninth.
April ninth, it'd be April ninth. You know, we can put it up on the board and summarize it and so forth. So I just asked for a motion that we set a public hearing, and the clerk would do the appropriate notices to the Kingston Daily Freeman, set for seven P M, April ninth, for the budget review process. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. E V charging station status. Let me see if I can find something on my computer here. As you know, we had that grant, and it's coming up on springtime, the grant's from D E C. And we've been working with our engineers, but then the winter hit and different things, and didn't make any sense to, to try to build it in the winter. Bear with me a second. Our engineer's been working with D E C, and I received this this morning, I haven't totally reviewed it, but D E C is writing to the engineer saying, please change the status, contract info submitted. It's an internal processing step for the D E C. But D E C is saying, everything looks good. If the contracts need anything else, she'll get back to us. We're going to move toward charge point, that's the system the town used. It might make sense to have a uniform type of a charge point there. What they would do is, the D E C talks about it, and the software and so forth, because early on, the usage is covered by D E C, and then it converts later on, will charge directly. We're not, my position is, we're not going to give the energy free to the customer out there, but in the initial parts of the contract, of the use phases, it's, the D E C works with that. So we'll probably look at this a little more Friday this week to make sure things good. But as far as placement, I think rather than take away any of our staff parking, I'd like to put it towards the Chinese restaurant side of the lot. At the same time, we'll use our highway department to cut the pavement and dig the trench and so forth, and get it ready, so to speak, for the laying of the conduit and cable from the chamber kiosk. And we'd probably put it next to the two handicap spots that are over there, and it'd be one upright stanchion, and theoretically would take up two parking places, if, we'll have to figure out. Putting a sign there that states something, but that'd be there. It's kind of a twofold reason for doing it, like I said, not to tie up staff space, and then B, we have a pretty significant sag in the middle of the lot there. I thought as we're cutting through, we might make it a little bigger and see if we can fill that or somehow make it a little less of a belly in that section of the lot right there. And...
Let me also review this with Dan, since he plows that lot, just to make sure that it's not in danger of being...
Yeah, it would be, yeah, it'd be not on the end over here, it'd be on the side by the fence over there. Yeah, I did talk to him a little bit, and, but we'd like to, but I'm thinking, once the weather really breaks, you know, we'd probably get it in. So it'd be exciting to get there, up and running. That's the status of that. If we could move to the next one, I was expecting a fire company representative here to do their monthly report, but they haven't showed up. The village has taken a stance, circulated a document to the fire company, I don't know if Panda can get this, but we found this on Facebook, that a company known as Armsta, which is an acronym for the Arms Traders of America, is sponsoring a state of Utah handgun course, and the venue is listed as Red Hook Firehouse. We had no consultation, no consent was given, and we were taken aback at the notice of it. And looking at the lease that we have with the fire company, we sent them a letter on March second. They have not responded, and we expected to talk to them tonight when they did their presentation. We've also written directly to the provider of the course, and said that they are a use that is not intended under terms of our lease, and I can explain more. Our review of it, and with counsel, is that they're charging, the sponsor is charging a course fee, and you get a state of Utah application to apply for a concealed carry permit in the state of Utah. The problem we have with it as a village is, at first, it wasn't clear to us if it's actually use of handguns or firing of handguns, and that's been ruled out, which is good. But we are a municipal subdivision of the state of New York, and when we take office, we take an oath to uphold the constitution of this state. And this particular program looks to be promoting the laws and reciprocity rules of the state of Utah, and in fact, generates revenue for the state of Utah. Our problem as a board, we analyzed this and sent this formal letter, and like I said, our problem is that it's municipal property in the state of New York promoting concealed carry rules that are much looser than New York state, and they're also providing revenue to another state. We did run it by the Dutchess County DA's office, the pistol permit world, and of the sheriff's department, and we ran it by our council, like I said. If you look at the promotional material, it's essentially saying that Utah is a very easy state to get a concealed carry permit, and New York, of course, is a stricter state. We do have various departments here in the village. One is the fire department, one is the police department, a highway department, and a planning zoning department, and they all are under our purview. In this case, the Red Hook Fire Company operates fire operations, which we view to include training and fire prevention and firefighting. It's, none of their mission statement is to deal with handgun licensing, and we were not consulted, like I said, in offering this course. We're a bit baffled by the fact they haven't responded, and we've had some indirect contacts, but the board has taken a formal stance, and we'll have to see what develops. I was hoping they would come in and we could talk directly, but the session is set for March eighteenth at the firehouse, and just to repeat to the public, it's not condoned or with the consent of this village board. So we are working on asking them to relocate it. In our opinion, it's better served at a gun, either a gun dealership or a gun club, somewhere where folks are used to the presence and dealing with guns, and it really has nothing to do with the operation of a fire department in the village of Red Hook. So that being said, and I don't know if any other board members had commented, but we were, in our letters, we offered to talk and explain our stance, but we did explain it in writing to everybody involved, and we'll have to talk with counsel, but it's not allowed to happen on our property. We have copies of the lease here, and it's been provided to everybody, but we'll have to work on that in some other fashion. I don't know if anybody in the board has any other thoughts, suggestions, and what we can do if they're not responding. Anyway, we'll move on. Building Department. Jay was talking about the monthly reports and revenue, but also during the month, we had news from our current code enforcement and zoning enforcement officer, that he had to job change at his main job, and he can't give us the hours that he had been giving us, which is a shame, because he was actually doing a good job for us. It was Clark Kimball. He will stay on, though, as our fire inspector. He can find the flexibility of his schedule to do that part of it. So in workshop, we talked about options, and the village board has decided to go with a ninety-day probationary period as we look at other solutions. And a ninety-day, we would use Gary Beck in a consulting company, he's a principal in Z Three Consultants. They've already covered the March eighth, last Thursday, detail, and what he's doing is, he has an associate who would be covering Red Hook, and then Beck would be working with him. I think, though, to be technically correct, so we can enforce and do certain things properly, even though it's not a normal appointment session of the year, and that'll only be our April meeting, I think this thirty-day or forty-five-day gap till our next real meeting, we need to have a fully designated, authorized code enforcement officer and his deputy. So what I put on the agenda there is, my suggestion is that Gary Beck be appointed now, under my authority, but with board concurrence, to be acting code enforcement and zoning enforcement officer, and his associate, Jim Greaves, would be appointed acting deputy code enforcement and zoning enforcement. But they do work under the auspices of Z Three, where we'll be paying that monthly retainer we talked about. I know they've already done a few cases on last Thursday, and it seems like it would work out. And we might consider, we were doing three to six P M. as our visit to zoning officer, code enforcement officer time. We might shift that back one to four. That was primarily created to coincide with the availability of Clark Kimball.
What date?
I'm not, I think I want to run one more week, you know, see how it works with the three to six. It's, it'll be Thursdays, yeah, if that's what you meant. Yeah, we'd keep the Thursday. I hate to keep bouncing it around days and all that stuff, so, but we might. But the plan is for now, run another one, three to six, see what kind of volume there is, and then we could talk about shifting it just to the normal day. The team is available earlier in the day, not, not just the later day time zone we were using. But that being said, like I said, I think we have to do the formal appointment, just to give them the fully granted authority of our village board. So I would put a motion out that Gary Beck be appointed acting code enforcement officer, Z E O. for ninety-day timeframe, effective, we'll call it, March one, retroactively. And then Jim Graves, an associate of his, would be acting deputy code enforcement, zoning enforcement officer, and they both work under the same company, Z Three Consultants. But it is important that we name individuals, because that's who signs the actual, any enforcement paperwork. I offer as a motion, as an appointment, under executive authority, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. And that's a quasi segue to planning board vacancy. Lara, our secretary up there, indicated that Mark Morando is having conflicts timewise, time commitment wise, in making the planning board meetings. He missed the last one. Fortunately, they did have a quorum, he no-showed it. So I wrote to him, she said he indicates he wants to do a planned resignation, and I was thinking he was talking about, like, now, but apparently he wants to stay on, he says he can stay on till July of this year. I don't see enough grounds to forcibly remove him, but I was hoping he would, my plan was to appoint somebody tonight to fill his spot, but he, in writing, did not resign. He said he will resign effective in July. So I think we'll have to forego that, but we'll have to just keep reminding him that he has a duty to show up. We need to have quorums at these things. Anyway, the last item I have here is budget sessions, was more of a reminder to everybody, we're almost there. The tentative budget, like we said earlier, the meeting is due on March twentieth, I think this Thursday, between... I think this Thursday, between now and Thursday, Cindy and I'll go over my spreadsheet and convert it to hers. I think we've hit all the big ticket items and we're looking good. I have developed a proposed sewer budget, which is kind of fun. Like we were saying in workshop, it's a thing that doesn't exist today and we'll have income starting slowly, but expenses starting not so slowly as far as certain operating costs. So this Thursday, we would have our normal workshop meeting. And, um, so I'd remind you all to be there if at all possible.
So Ed?
Yes.
Is that the 20th?
Yeah. The 20th is Tuesday.
Um, what you might be looking at, the tentative budget is due on the 20th.
Oh, okay, got you.
Yeah, it's not the meeting date. Um, you know, it's, Thursday is what, the 15th? So that gives us some time to work and then tune it up. And, and like I said earlier, it's not the drop dead date. That one's just less easy to modify once, but we can still modify up until the May meeting, really. But anyway, those are the things we have on the agenda to hit. And what about board members? Do you have any things on your mind before we go out to the public? All good? All right. We could entertain some public comment from there. What's up?
I had to mention about that Utah permit.
Oh, yeah.
You're missing totally.
Think so? Yeah.
Now, you got, you got, uh, Century Cities operating, it's a totally violation of federal law. And that's okay. This is a gun safety course, if anything. It does not give anybody in New York state that doesn't live in Utah, a permit to, to own a car, uh, own a gun, carry a gun. Some of us have, have acquired it because we have a New York state permit. It's more of a secondary in case we do travel. And it's, it's just, it's a safety rule. And there's no guns involved there. It's a video game, it's a, it's a slideshow. Telling what you can do in certain states, what's allowed. You protect yourself and your family in some states, in New York state, you're really not allowed to.
I don't think we're even going, we're not really going to that level, George. What we're looking at is, it's, the fire department is an authorized entity under the existence of the village of Red Hook. The fire company operates fire prevention, prevention control, the different things.
They bring it out there, off their rooms for parties or weddings or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody, another company coming in, offering the service, if you want to call it that.
Yeah.
And it's nothing to do with the absolute gun, guns.
Well.
Nothing on the, on the fanatic fan bike.
Yeah, right now, we're not really standing so much on the nature of what's being offered. The, the lease we have with them is very specific. And some of the things you said are what's included, they can do in the lease. Other things they need to get written consent from the village. And, um, nobody's received that or even asked for it. In, in our mind, the department roles, you know, highway department does highway things, the police department does police things, the fire department does fire-related things. And this, the lease was built that way and it just, we're not really getting to the merits of what you just said. That's more philosophical, political. This is, hey, the business arrangement we have says certain things and that's where we're at right now.
I think you're wrong.
Hmm, well.
Well, we, we asked the village council. We said, does, does what they want to do fall within the terms of their lease? And he said, no.
What's their opinion?
Well, that's, that's the opinion that counts.
What they're telling you, paying that person to tell you what they think, so.
No, we're not that way, George.
I think that's a short-sighted answer, but you know, you go to your attorney because he's had the training. He understands these things, he understands the legalities, he understands the exposure to the village, and he said that it's not a good idea.
Well, again, they don't understand that.
If the lease said different things, then it, it would happen. It says no, so we say no.
Well, yeah, I'm sure you have a lease that gives every option, every opportunity, anniversaries, whatever you want to do, there's a celebration in there or a meeting, AARP or whatever. You can't cover all the bases on this.
Well, the lease is pretty good and it's a fifth-year lease, you know, it's designed. But a key word, the fire company shall not use the lease premises for any other purpose than the firehouse, excuse me, is the word "that" should be "than." The fire company should not use the lease premises for any other purposes, other purpose than a firehouse without the prior written consent of the village. Because, give some exceptions for weddings, banquets and things that happen over there. This is.
Well, it's something that happens once every, maybe once it's happened before, maybe twice in the last 20 years. This type of, uh, of course.
Yeah, we, I don't know about that. I mean, what we're saying is we were not consented, consulted or, and, uh, it's, that's the stance we take.
Other than that? Phone says it's, uh. About time to go here. What do we have, um, pay some bills? I see the vouchers, Charlie, did you get through those? You good? And, uh, um, so therefore I would, uh, make a move that we, motion that we, uh, pay the bills upon review by the board. It looks like vouchers have been signed by enough trustees. Mr. Trap, I don't know if you got a look at them yet, but, um.
I haven't got them yet.
We could, uh, ship them down there and then. I guess the actual motion, move that we pay bills after audit. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, um. After that, I would say we could adjourn this meeting. What do you say, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.